We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Palatka's Special Call Staff Reorganization and Second Budget Workshop for August 13, 2020. Mr. Holmes, I'm going to ask you, would you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Certainly. So if we could all bow our heads. Lord, we come to you tonight first with thanks. Thanks for all that you've given us, all that you do for us every day. And, and for the, the spirit that has caused the Commission and those who work for the city to spend their efforts on behalf of trying to build a better Palatka. We ask you to, to give us all wisdom as we move through tonight's meeting and going about the business of the city. Ask that you watch over our community in this time of crisis, of pandemic, and, and help us to help those who are out there trying to, to, to make their way in, in, in the city and to, to make their way an easier path. Ask all this name in Jesus Christ and for his sake, amen. Say the pledge with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. At this time, we have our roll call. Commissioner Borum.
President.
President.
Vice Mayor Brown. I know she's present, I just saw her. Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell. And Terrell Hill, I'm here. So all members are present and accounted for, and we do have a quorum at this time. We'll now open the floor for public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No actual will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please call 386-329-0100 so that your comments can be heard. Again, the number is 386-329-0100 so that your comments can be heard. Also, you may leave your comments in the comment chat section of our YouTube Live feed. So if there's anyone here for public comment, please leave your comments at this time. Seeing no one here for public comment, we will close public comment. Now we'll move on to our agenda items. Item number one is discussion of reorganization. And I will let Mr. Holmes go ahead and start off on item one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I've attempted to do after coming to the city in these last four months is to take a look at, at our operations and look to see what I thought we could do by way of improving our efficiency and performance with the staff that we have and with the budget that we have. And I've, I've mentioned some of the changes that you see before you, to you during your one-on-one budget meetings. But in order to kind of fully vet the ideas, we're, we're having this workshop tonight, I don't think the changes are monumental. They're not intended to reflect any negativity towards any person or staff person or employee at all. They're, they're really intended to try to allocate our responsibilities and match those best with the talents that we have on staff to get the best performance that I think we can. If you look at the third kind of slide or page on the, on what I'm showing as our, well, it's, I guess it's the handout that you've got, the packet that you've got, there's a summary of the changes. It's on the page entitled, here are the changes and updates. And, and what you'll see there is a suggestion that we essentially take the position of Public Works Director and make that position General Services Director and take the, create a second position called Operations, Public Works Operations Manager, and which would, which would be filled by Sean Ladd, and put the water sewer, solid waste, streets and facilities maintenance, the actual sort of, sort of hands-on work of those departments under Mr. Ladd while freeing Mr. Griffith up, who would be the General Services Director, to still retain the supervision over the water plant wastewater treatment and projects and grants, but that would also free Mr. Griffith up some additional time to perhaps help further with the job description that we've created for him, which would include project administration, project oversight, funding issues, what, what I think, in my opinion, are, are, you know, areas where we can actually strive further to obtain more funding and more efficiency. And, and though, when I say that, understand that as, if, as you all know, a lot of the capital works projects that we've done, most all of them in recent times have been funded by the grants that our staff has been able to secure and procure, 11 miles of, of replacement of water pipe and all of the other projects, including the spray field, the wastewater treatment plant, and all those things that have been through the efforts of staff and finding money so that it didn't come out of our, our general fund on that, so that the vast majority of it didn't. So they've been doing a great job. But I think that freeing up some more time to help with the procurement process, the contract administration, the contract formulation, those sorts of things in a General Services Director would allow us to best maximize the skills that Mr. Griffith has, which, which are really pretty unique. It's a unique skill set. He and Mandy Tucker do a great job in, in, in a lot of those areas that work hand in hand. But I think that by freeing up some of the, the, the supervision over the water sewer, solid waste and streets and facilities maintenance, we can give Mr. Griffith the opportunity to even make greater strides in that arena. Similarly, over in the Public Works Ops Manager side of the schematic, you see that we put a facilities maintenance person back in, and we've made some changes on the flow chart that, again, I think will improve our efficiency. So in the process of that, we did create a engineer's position that we had talked about for some time. It's vacant. We funded, we have budgeted some money for that under Mr. Griffith. That would be a position that falls under Mr. Griffith. And we have, have also, of course, in the, in the scheme of things, we've moved, we've changed the title of Culture Affairs, which Mr. Cutright has. What I've suggested is that we change that to Community Affairs. And what I'd like to do is bring Code Enforcement over to Mr., to Mr. Cutright, which I understand that'd be a learning curve, but it'll put it closer to City Hall and give us an opportunity to work more closely with the city attorney and, and myself in terms of, of trying to basically ramp up that department and, and, and move forward with it. And again, this is not a criticism of anybody, it's just me trying to put pieces in place where I think we can get the biggest effect and impact out of them. Based upon the wishes of the Commission as expressed earlier, we've added an assistant to the city manager, I'm sorry, an assistant city manager. As you see, we're letting the assistant As you see, we're letting the assistant to the city manager, which is Ms. Krantz, act as the interim city clerk. And we're not filling that position right now. Our our budget, as Ms. Logan, as Ms. Becker's gonna tell you in a little while, is basically zeroed out because of projected revenue shortfall, and I don't want to steal her thunder, but we're gonna basically be operating with zero contingency right now. Of course, you know, with lapses in positions and positions that may not get filled right away and so forth, there'll probably be some money freed up, but the the point is that by not hiring a city clerk right now, we we basically can can save that money. So we've created job descriptions for all the positions that we that we have, any position that we've created and some that were already in place. And with that's with that overview, I mean, there's a certainly a breakdown that you can see as to how the flow chart would work. We did recommend some raises to some people to, well, for for a variety of reasons, but basically to reflect the responsibilities that they're taking on. Mr. Chandler, Jermaine, and a couple of others, Mr. Cutright, for the, you know, the added responsibilities he's taking on, but 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 the flow charts essentially explain the general hierarchy and and then, as I said, we have created written job descriptions for each. So with that, if you have questions, then then I'm I'm happy to answer, and I know that Ms. Becker's on the line, and so is Ms. Robinson. So between the three of us, hopefully, we can fill in the 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 blanks.
So this is Commissioner McCaskill. My question is, one of my questions. You said that Mr. Cutright went from Cultural Affairs to Community Affairs, so his title was just basically changed. And you're bringing over Code Enforcement under his leadership and receiving a raise for getting up. He's receiving a raise for those additional duties?
Correct.
Okay, and you mentioned Mr. Chandler was getting a raise, right? With only two, because I thought maybe that we spoke about more additional individuals getting raises on our one and our one-on-ones.
Jermaine Douglas, because we put him in a different position, we we added money there. Ms. Robinson, whom I forgetting?
On Ladd.
Sean Ladd, of course, I'm sorry, of course.
Ms. Krantz.
And and Sunny, Ms. Krantz.
And Sunny, because of the fact that she's gonna be basically doing the, you know, the she basically, well, she's actually serving a number of roles, as most of you know, who've been at City Hall. Ms. Krantz has done what I expected that she would do, and she's she's uh she's filling a number of roles. I think we also put some additional money in for the assistant to the HR Director, did we not?
Yes, for Ms. Ms. Stevens now. Yes, and also Mr. Bridges for Facility Maintenance.
Hey, before, I have a question. I thought maybe we also so talking about an assistant to HR. So I know that we talked about in our one-on-ones, I think that Courtney will be moving to Finance. Am I right about that?
You're right, Mr. McCaskill. That is what we talked about, and then I found in in looking at the auditing picture that that probably was not gonna fly because the auditors require a separation of duties in terms of the authorization verification and then payment of some of the things that HR verifies now, and if I put Ms. Stevens over under Finance, I'd have all those duties under the same department. So we felt like I was I was gonna be creating an issue there. So what we've done is we've left Ms. Stevens under Ms. Robinson, and Ms. Robinson and I have discussed an allocation of job responsibilities so that we can kind of define Ms. Stevens, her her role in terms of the detail work of of payments and verification and maintain the division of responsibility that the auditors require. So you're right when you say that that's what I had talked about doing, but as we reflected on this and ran it by different departments and discussed it, we felt there'd be an auditing issue.
And and did I hear you say that she would be receiving a a a raise as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, and about maybe I I don't know if this is our topic or not, but Mrs. Robinson, you were working on that employee handbook, am I right? Is this is this the this job descriptions that we've updated? Is this all included in there? Where are you at in the process of getting that handbook completed?
Ms. Thomas and I have reviewed the handbook, so we're working through the edits that she's suggested, so hopefully we'll have that done in the next week or so. All of the job descriptions actually for the new fiscal year will be updated. That's for everybody across the city so that we can start with a fresh slate for the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year.
Okay, so that everybody be aware of what their actual job descriptions are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I have I have a question. We hired some people for taking care of the buildings, like Bronson House and places that we let out rent or have activities going, the train station and Price Martin. Do they fall up under Mr. Cutright?
Well, we we had previously, as I understand, had a facilities maintenance person. And I think that position had been basically vacant. We've now put Mr. Bridges in the position of facilities maintenance, and that will be his task. But if you're speaking, I mean, there'll still be a need for, I'm sure, like cleaning, for instance. It has been my suggestion that we not put on a regular employee for the cleaning of the facilities that you referenced, but if instead, and I think we may even already have an RFP formulated, we go ahead and and see if we can contract that out. I believe that'll save us in terms of benefits. It'll save us in terms of the vehicle that was allocated for that person. And and I believe it'll give us more flexibility in terms of 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 our cleaning schedules and also maybe even in view of the COVID issue, allow us to add a disinfectant component to the cleaning. So, you know, if that answered your question, we will have, again, a facilities maintenance person whose task it is to do the maintenance that they can do. There are obviously going to be some expectations of that person in terms of certificates and training. But there will still be the need, I'm sure, to contract out some services.
Yeah, I'm not talking about cleaning and stuff. I'm talking about having those buildings open. If you're looking in the future at doing tourism, there has to be somewhere for people to wanna come when they come, a tour set up. And the Bronson Houses is one, and the I think the people on the historic district do the museum next to it. And we need to get the people who do the train station of that is to train exhibitions over there, miniature train things that would draw tourists and people to the town and maybe have them spend some money here. Price Martin was priced out of out of range of most people because of an incident they had where somebody rented it for somebody else and they took drugs and stuff in. But that building needs to be utilized for for folks to really use. Even if we had some things in there that we did not charge for, but were services for maybe the stuff that PAL does with kids or something. And I think that while we're looking at you putting people in a place to do things, we need to, we need to have you kind of look at how we can do that, too. Because we got some nice things going for us, our ball fields and and then there's the Booker Park. Those things that need to have somebody with oversight that takes care of the charges and cleanup and the basic rental of them or the use of them.
Well, you'll, of course, you're you're right. I think you kind of asked whether or not Mr. Cutright would still be in the position of 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 looking over those, and to the extent that you're talking about scheduling and those sorts of things, he still would be. If you look at the flow charts, flip back up here. You'll see under Community Affairs, Mr. Cutright has Mr. Pound in Recreation, Mr. Fletcher, and then in Code Enforcement, he's gonna have Ms. Clark Jackson. We anticipate that there's going to be a clerk position there also, but Mr. Cutright would retain the responsibility for supervision of those of those buildings. I misunderstood when you said maintenance. But he would still retain the responsibility of supervision for those facilities. You can see out of the Community Affairs section.
They they really need to be open for folks to come to and use because if if we set it up right, people will come here, we could keep them overnight for some of the stuff. They could go out on the boat. They could use the facility on the waterfront that we have there. They have weddings and all that stuff there, and we need to utilize them more. So if we don't get, if you don't get it done in this budget, please look at it for your next year to expand what you can do with tourism. Because I think that we have, I think we're heading in that direction, and that's something we need to plan for.
Yes, ma'am, and of course, right now with COVID, that's sort of a difficult task. Mr. Cutright hasn't even been able to implement some of the recreational programs that he he's actually chomping at a bit to move forward with, but you know, we we have some limitations in that regard right now.
He can plan, though.
Oh, he's planning, trust me.
He's overplaying.
He can get his plans, and when it when the time opens up, get it done.
He's actually had a volunteer come here. So he's excited, Ms. Brown. He's actually shared a couple of things with me about what he's wanting to do, so I think he can't wait to to get get the the ball running, rolling on that.
Mr. Cutright, you have anything you want to add?
Mr. Mayor, I may I do have one more question. I'm sorry tonight.
Yeah, well, Mr. Cutright's responding.
Okay, just a question, a clarification. Okay, I know that we said that.
You ready for me, or you want her to talk first, ma'am?
I'll wait, go ahead.
Well, yes. Be careful what you ask for.
Ms. Ms. Brown, we have several programs that I would have been planned out from mentorship programs to kickballs, soccer, and everything. So we are in a motion of ready to to go hot and fast whenever the mayor and the city manager give me the green light. I got it. Everything typed out and ready. On the facilities that you brought up about the the keeping them clean and getting them up and running, I do have a proposal that I was gonna send to Mr. Holmes and the mayor tomorrow for y'all to look at it before we present it to y'all. I'm with you in trying to get them back open. We're just waiting to see how this COVID nineteen, this pandemic gonna continue to affect us.
Any questions for Mr. Cutright?
Cutright, I know you're trying to, you have some good things planned, but I'm talking about the tourism side of it. We have some excellent things that people come to town and they're not open. It used to be we had a dogman at the Bronson House. And they would take people on tours and stuff, so you could almost plan for for that. And the building next to it, the Arts Council, I mean, the the historical people open it up periodically for folks to go in and see it. We have all these wonderful things here, but nobody, when people come to town, they don't find anything to do because they're not open. I I was at, we look at finding a way to focus on having them open. If they weren't open every day, have certain days at least for people to get into them. It's no need to having them if we can't utilize them to help with the tourism and other stuff we want to bring people here for, and that's what I'm talking about.
And and that's a good point, ma'am, and we're on the same page. Actually, I was gonna present a Thursday and Friday proposal tomorrow to see about getting some of these things back open on a on a small scale or soft open to let people kind of see. We actually, before COVID hit, you know, we was creating a tourism designation focus group to try to bring all the wonderful things in the city up on the one umbrella so people know what's going on. But at that time, when COVID hit, we kind of put everything on hold, because a lot of my community volunteers that was helping me with that was my senior community, and we didn't want to bring them out to have discussions while it's going on. But your ideas and your thoughts are, trust me, are definitely on my calendar, definitely on my desk, and we ready to go hot with all of this stuff once we get the green light to open the city back up.
I think I think Mr. Cutright also brings in an excellent point. Many of the things historically, Vice Mayor, at least during the thirty-six years you've been on the commission, have been things that have been really been able to stay alive because of the work of volunteers, particularly seniors. For example, what we get at Waterworks or the River Center, and so they are mostly retirees, and they are in the most restricted category as it relates to COVID nineteen.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about COVID nineteen. I mean.
No, but let me let me finish. Let me finish. Let me finish. And so I think the thing you gotta be cognizant of is there has not been a budget in the city as it relates to certain items of tourism. We can work through those things. We definitely believe that tourism is gonna be a great part of what's going on. Where we are right now, particularly with this pandemic and being in the middle of hurricane season, dealing with some of the things that we have in place, having reduced revenues as it relates to this particular budget year, I think the greatest concern we've got is being able to balance the budget more than anything else. And, you know, the wish list is a wonderful thing to have, but when you've got unforeseen costs, you don't know if you're gonna be reimbursed through CARES Act. You don't know you're one hurricane away from scrambling for some additional money. I think what we have to do, and I I think you're absolutely right, tourism is gonna be key as we start to build budgets in the future, but for this year's budget, this budget's gonna be tight from the standpoint of there are so many unknowns that are out there that we've got to make sure that we budget for operation more than anything else. And, you know, it's, quite frankly, we haven't budgeted forward in the past, probably in my lifetime, and we're gonna try to move forward and use Humanities Council and things of that nature to do walking tours and some other things, which will allow us in this new normal, because people won't be moving around in the same way to start to creatively be able to cover some of the assets that we have. And those are things that Mr. Cutright and his department have been looking at, they've been working on, because they're making adjustments as to what the new normal is. We may find ourselves doing virtual tours for the River Center and for the Bronson House as opposed to having people physically come into these facilities simply because it's too dangerous in a lot of cases right now with the way the numbers are going to even start to do some of that other stuff.
Ma'am, I wasn't talking about doing it this year because I know that it's not in the budget, but I won't be here for next year's budget, and I want to put this on y'all's hearts and minds that it'll be a focus point for the as soon as it can be done, we can get back to normalcy as soon as it can be done to make it a big part of what it does to help motivate and move with this town and get more businesses and things to come in. I would just want y'all to have it in in your heads to think about it, and I wanted to put it in the minute so that you can look back and and relate to it.
That was. I think we're putting that thought. Let's move this move the agenda to the next piece that you got, Mr. Holmes. I'm sorry, go back. We're gonna go back to Commissioner McCaskill's comment.
And then I want to make a comment before he close out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I it's just a note of a question of clarification. I understand that Mr. Bridges was one of the ones that we said were getting a raise as well. Am I right, Mrs. Robinson?
That is correct.
And he took on the the task of facilities maintenance, but Mr. Holmes, did you also say that he was getting a raise? He took on the task of facilities maintenance. Also gonna, we also put out an RFP, our RFP, or we're going to do want to contract out some of those services as well?
Facilities maintenance, meaning repair type items. The RFP I was talking about was for cleaning. At this time, for instance, no one cleaned City Hall. We're, I mean, it's not that we're above it, but we're taking out our own trash, vacuuming our own floors, sweeping, and everybody else is, too. And that's not, not that I'm saying as I And that's not, not that I'm saying, as I said, that we're too good for that, but on the other hand, I'm not sure it's the best application of resources and the talent that we have. So I was talking about when I say an RFP from, or I meant cleaning.
Okay.
Disinfecting also during at least the COVID time.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Certainly, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Borum?
Yeah, just, I was just wondering, you know, with all the different, I guess, raises, promotions and moves and increases or what have you in different salaries, that's still all within the same budget and did it come as a relate to the cuts or was it was still within the budgets or how how does that work?
This is all proposed for our October 1 budget year, and it and it has all been done in conjunction with Ms. Becker, and it is all factored in, and we do have a balanced budget with the raises. And quite honestly, none of the raises are huge. They're they're not, we're not talking about doubling anybody's salary or anything of that nature. Now, you did create, we did create some positions at the commission boat, actually, the assistant city manager position and the the engineer position, but, you know, we save money in other locations. For instance, the raise given to Ms. Krantz, and I don't want to get too much into detail, but the raise given to her still leaves her filling the position of assistant to the city manager and the acting clerk for significantly less than what the what was budgeted for the clerk alone. So actually, I think we've been physically prudent in 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 the moves that we've made. But if you, but if you want specifics, we can provide those too in terms of the amount.
And and also she's been acting in the capacity of assisting the commission, whatever clerical.
That says that's correct.
Well, I mean, whatever specifics y'all want to provide, but it's just, I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever we're doing, and again, like like we were talking about earlier in the year about potential shortfalls, and I kind of spoke about that early on in the process and in trying to figure out what is essential, what's absolutely necessary or what have you, and what if we continue this path? I mean, what would that look like in terms of with the additional positions and additional fundings and all these different things? What would it look like if we keep this same trend? That those are just concerns of mine. I I see where we did some budget cuts with the police department, fire department, and a couple of, I mean, with your city car or what have you, but what happens if we continue this path?
Well, obviously, budget is a balance revenue and expenditures and that path, so to speak, is one you have to look at each year, in my opinion. The, and and you always have, when you're looking at that, in my opinion, the balance of performance versus your 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 budget expenditures. For instance, in my opinion at least, moving Mr. Griffith and freeing up time, his time to help in the in the investigation, identification of potential grants, administration, contract administration, contracts and procurement, you know, that if, he didn't, we did not build in a raise for him in this, but freeing up his time, in my opinion, allows us to make better use of his talents, which are, as I said, significant in those regards, and I believe that the city will actually, I think, will profit financially from freeing up his time to let him do what I think he has special talents to do. I think the enthusiasm we're gonna build of some of the people who we've allowed to to basically elevate their positions over in the operations side is going to show benefits in, I believe, an increased morale and 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 desire to to perform because we've given some people some chance to to move up that 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 didn't have a place to go under the old structure. And as I said, the only real significant, you you mentioned the fact that instead of getting a new car for myself, we kept the old car. I did have some repairs made at no expense to the city. We saved about $30,000 with that and no net expense to the city. I'm gonna drive it for another year. The only, the the biggest, the most significant numbers in this budget or in this reorganization are in the two positions that we've added but not yet filled. So as I said, the engineer's position and the assistant city manager position would be the most substantial increase. We saved about $16,000 for the city clerk salaries using the restructuring of public works. We ended up with a negative 16,000 in that process. And we can go through item by item, but when you look at all of it, I don't think that the the net impact upon the budget of anything other than the assistant city manager and engineer is is significant at all.
Well, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't questioning the the logistics and the move that you made. I think y'all, you did an awesome job with that. I was just concerned with, you know, future projections. Again, because we had talked about the the engineering position that had been something that was on the radar a while back because of the criticality of that role in the number of projects that's rolled out in the city, and we don't have anybody who have an engineering background, and we're paying for those services over and over again, and, you know, in most time when you run projects, it's a hundred thousand plus. So just to get the consultant side of an engineer, so you run that across 10 times, you got over a million dollars. So that would pay for itself, and those are the kind of things that we need to really be looking at and making sure that, you know, it's some kind of return on the investment, and like you say, the efficiency piece, I mean, I think that, you know, those are really good things, and I think you thought those out. Only question I had was just sometime when we give people money in advance, not saying that people didn't deserve those, tho- tho- that money, you know, in advance, and we 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 in the past done things as it relates to no evaluations. Some people haven't had evaluations since they been with the city, and how do we properly vet and say that the individuals truly deserve it based on, you don't have any documentation to say, well, this person really they saved us $100,000 just, or they improved this efficiency, cut the processing of permits by two or three days, these kind of things. But we don't have any of those in a lot of those raises and promotion. And, you know, I just like to see some things like that to kind of at least say, hey, you know, we really, these people really deserve those raises and promotions or whatever. So, but that's that's all I have, and I'm not questioning anything that you're doing.
I appreciate, I appreciate you asking the questions, and I appreciate you giving the chance to, you know, explain, for instance, Mr. Ladd, I think, has 22 years in, is that right, Ms. Robinson, or 24? Ms. Robinson?
Don, you don't have to, I I'm not, like I said, I was not questioning the whole, and I was just saying, you know, we have a number of employees, and I would just say, you know, we can pick an employee, but I'm just saying, across the board, we just have not had a lot of people who have had reviews.
Well, that's true. Happy to report to you that, happy to report to you that Ms. Robinson and I have already met, and I have already met. And as a matter of fact, discussions have been had with some of the people that are involved in this process, and and we will have a yearly evaluation performed by every supervisor in the city. The old system that you had, if you call it a system, was that people were trying to theoretically trying to do evaluations based upon date of hire. Well, from what I've given to understand and trying to understand the processes here, that was so confusing that you had just a, it just basically was unworkable. So what I have done is, Ms. Robinson and I, I've discussed it, and I've advised her that I'd like to go to an evaluation on the same day for everybody yearly. I think I told her I'd like to look at January or February for that process. And with regard to those supervisors who may not be accustomed to evaluating their employees, I advise Ms. Robinson that what I'd like to do is to have her prepare a DVD or video, which we'd make time for our supervisors to watch so that the evaluation form could be explained in a tutorial, and they could be trained as to how to prepare the evaluations. And then we would expect a supervisor to do the evaluations of everybody that that is under their command, and the supervisors would be evaluated in part based upon the fact that they did or didn't perform and submit the evaluations. And speaking with the mayor, then after, after some of this, he told me he felt that some of those tutorials may already be available from League of Cities. If they are, then we're happy to to take advantage of that. But one way or the other, our supervisors will be, have, they will receive training and information on how to prepare an evaluation, a fair evaluation of their staff, because you're right. I mean, we don't have a a bank of evaluations of our employees as I as I sit here right now, but that will change. And you're right, you do need evaluations in order to make determinations about raises moving forward, as especially as the commission decides how it's gonna proceed with its raise platform. You know, right now, you've got the longevity raise that's lump sum at 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 certain intervals, and y'all have talked about changing that. But I know you're gonna want to see evaluations as part of the process of determining raises. So that that is being put in place, and you will be seeing those.
Well, I appreciate it. You didn't have to go to that length, but again, just if, an example, I'm just gonna give you an example of what the school district and what they have in place. Well, what they do, they go based on if any event that a person need to be, if they need to cut budgets or anything like that, and it happens to be employees may need to leave, what they do, they go by not just long, they don't go longevity, they go based on the performance and then longevity. They put a number of different factors in place, you know, your evaluation, all of those key things are in there. It just doesn't go on longevity because longevity don't get you anything. If you, you can come to work and not be doing anything, but look. So I I I appreciate the explanation, but you didn't have to go that detail, and I didn't mean to take this long, so.
You're speaking of merit retention policies, and I think that's one of the critical pieces of what we have. I I wholeheartedly agree with with some of the stuff that you're saying, Commissioner Borum. I think the other piece that, as a commission, as we look at this budget and future budgets, is we have to also look at revenues, and we've got to look at the places that have been deficits for revenues where we're well below the market and the region as it relates to revenues in this in this community. But we also have to also look at, are we getting the highest and best use of the properties that we have? We find ourselves in a very philanthropic position historically in some places where we're losing revenues just based on the fact that we fail to even seek bids or proposals to maximize assets that we have in place. And so I think all of that goes hand in hand. It's a, it's a constant, it's a constant evaluation. I think the commission has to work in concert with staff to make those things happen. But the only way that you can stop the trend that you foresee coming in the future is for us to really look at revenues versus expenses, because every year expenses are increasing, and our revenues seem to be pretty stagnant as the way certain things are in place. And I think that once we realize how to maximize our assets that we have in place as well as find creative ways to create additional revenues, i.e. tourism or whatever it may be, I think we'll be in a much better position. And these conversations are healthy for that piece to happen, because it means that the commission as a whole is thinking about ways that we constantly get better. And so I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing. I think the detail was absolutely necessary in this conversation, so I thank you for that, Commissioner, because it allows us to get a better perspective of where we are. So on the day-to-day operational side, you know, I think that the city manager is being put in the perfect position. You know, we hire him, we hire city managers to come in to do certain jobs, and I think it's incumbent upon us as we start to move forward to make sure that we trust the process sometimes, even early on. And I think, you know, with Don Holmes and at the helm, he he comes in with a, like a greater familiarity in a five-month period, sitting in the seat of some of the staff, as well as some of the conditions that have existed long term, just having been pulled into the room for some of these uncomfortable conversations. And I think it gives us a greater opportunity to kind of move forward. So I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing, and I'm looking forward to us all as we continue on in our budget season to try to find creative ways that we can actually increase revenue and get a higher and best use of our own properties that we have now, where we're receiving a dollar a year. Anything else from the commission?
No, I just think those, I mean, he's making some good moves. I really appreciate that.
Anyone else from the commission?
I'd like to say I'd like to thank him for doing this, because a lot of people work for the city and never knew what their job description was. And I think now, yeah, see, it's a roadmap to where everybody understands their own job. Thanks, Don.
I also would like to say, thank you for tackling this. This is something that we've noticed very own in our tenure as commissioners, and to finally see it being addressed, it it speaks volumes to what you have done thus far, you know, while while serving as city manager. And I'm quite, you're serving in the capacity of city attorney, you are very familiar with some of the conversation and dialogue that has happened in the, happened in the past, but to actually put something back on the front burner, it speaks volume, so definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you as well, Don, just to reiterate what you said, it helps to build enthusiasm and employee morale and allow employees to make great use of their talents. So thank you for what you're doing, really.
Thank you, thank you for support.
So I guess the other question is, so these are all, these are all changes we're looking to make in the upcoming fiscal year, not immediately.
Right, but that's not far. We're talking about, so October 1.
I I ask that only because we have it listed as, only because we have a list for discussion purposes only at this time, and so we won't be able to take an action. So it sounds like the commission seems to be pretty much in favor of where we are. There may be some common questions in the future days, but I would just suggest that we put this on as we approve our budget, that we go ahead and put this approval as a part of that budget session so that we'll have that stuff in place, so the reorg will be officially adopted. And if we, do we have any other questions or comments as it relates to discussion item number one on the agenda? Seeing that, we'll move to, thank you again, Mr. Holmes, for your work on this piece, and we will move to item two, which is to discuss the budget shortfalls and proposed cuts due to state revenue estimates. Are we taking this, Ms. Becker?
Hi, Mayor.
For the good news.
You're welcome. You can always count on me. If everybody can hear me, I'll go ahead and get started. I I do want to comment that from a finance standpoint, this conversation that everybody's having is very encouraging. I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mayor, when you say to discuss the revenue potentials and opportunities. It's a hard conversation to have, but, you know, it's a really important one that we have. As Mr. Holmes said earlier, it's important to note that all of our expected revenues have a matching expense in this budget in both Better Place and General Fund. We have leveraged every budget a dollar. This means that any additional projects or unexpected expenses or unbudgeted expenses during the year will either have to come from a reallocation of existing budget, which is essentially a cut, or from reserves.
Or lapse.
Correct, or lapse. And he spoke to that too with the unfilled positions. So since the workshop, we finalized the reorg proposal that you were just presented, and we've also received the state projected revenues, which brings us to the page in your agenda, budget shortfalls and proposed cuts. First, Better Place, we needed to reduce the expenses by roughly 150,000. We did see a decrease from the state estimates. We've proposed to, there's three different proposals, cut. We've proposed to, there's three different proposals, cuts. One is a project, uh, which is timing. The dollar amount on the project, it's the stormwater, um, South District Stormwater did not change, however, the timing on the project changed with that, which actually benefited the city. We reduced boardwalk improvements only because, um, as you spoke earlier, Mr. Griffith and, um, Ms. Tucker are very, very good at their jobs and, um, they're thinking that we might be able to, um, go out for a grant to help us with these improvements. So we only have to budget about twenty-five percent for now. Um, and those proposals will be brought to, to you, um, in the future for direction. And then, uh, reducing resurfacing and striping, so this one's kind of a heartache. We have so many projects going on right now that you are going to see a lot of resurfacing in the grants and the monies that we have leveraged as, uh, city matches. However, just for conversation purposes, we really need to be thinking about a preventative maintenance fund for our roads. Uh, Mr. Griffith has proposed that, you know, three miles of roadways a year would be great. Um, he was able to get a, a service life study on our roads. And, um, so we want to make sure that in the future, after some of these big projects are finished or completed, that we look at keeping that in our budget so that we're not scrambling in the years to come for a preventative maintenance. Any questions on Better Place?
We can proceed.
Okay, um, General Fund is next. State estimates were down roughly ninety, um, thousand collectively across all the different funding sources. The proposed cuts, like you mentioned earlier, a couple of the commissioners mentioned earlier, city manager car, um, our contingency, recreation and cultural, public works, fire and police, um, all they were all asked to give a portion of their operations money, um, to cut to make this happen, so you know, again, um, our service is very important to the general public and so whenever you see cuts like this having to be made, it is a little disheartening, but it's something that we all kind of predicted that we may have to do going into this year with the COVID related. Um, and so that's it for General Fund. With, with those proposals, we do have a balanced budget at this time.
Um, I have one other thing, I'm sorry. It's going to be really brief, or it's, it's regarding the, um, Better Place and I guess we can, I could just challenge the city manager on that, I know we're only getting, what, eighteen percent total for, uh, all the municipalities that, uh, support, but Palacca, it, it generates, I think Palacca generates, uh, more revenue from, uh, the, the, the sales or what have you, but some of that, the way it's distributed when the county gets their funding, is that something that we could possibly look at maybe so that we can get a little bit more of the pie, uh, per se? Is something we can look at, maybe?
Well, certainly, I'll look at it, absolutely. I'll be happy to look at that.
Yeah, I just didn't, I, I don't want a whole lot of discussion on, we can just continue to move, but if, if it's something that we can look at, if you don't mind putting it on your agenda, I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great point, Commissioner, as it relates to what we're talking about, because it gives us, um, it gives us an, just another point to look at when we start having our joint meetings with the county commission again, um, so that we can start to discuss proportionality and the opportunity for us to have a greater impact on some of the resources that come from Better Place.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Ms. Becker?
No, sir, that's it for me, unless there's any questions.
Vice Mayor, you got anything? Nothing from Vice Mayor, Mr. Campbell?
No, I don't have anything. Uh, our mayor was sworn in as
Hold that thought, we're going to try to get through this budget first.
Florida League of Cities Council of Mayors. And, um, I know a lot of people don't realize it, but our work is far-reaching, it's not only here in the city, but it's statewide and to be chosen out of all of the mayors in the state of Florida to lead them, they meet in Tallahassee with our legislative people and governors, they meet in Washington with our congresspeople and probably the president. So we have somebody here now that will be there to stand and, and stand and speak for us. For a long time, nobody knew where Palacca was and they said we were a dying city. But right now, I don't think that. I'd like to also say that the other members of this city commission have shown themselves in working throughout the years with the legislature and the people in Congress going to Washington and Tallahassee. This is something that, um, people don't know and they tell us this is a part-time job, but it's not really true. Each one of our commissioners has a unique ability and each one of them has put that ability to work. And I've been very proud to work with them in a period of time that they have been there. I started to say eight years, but Tammy's been there with us for and it's been a wonderful four years for me and me getting ready to leave y'all, but not until the end of December or somebody is sworn in in January. As you think about us and fuss about what we don't do, sometimes you need to look at what we do do. Thank you.
And so, I definitely appreciate that recognition. Let's finish up as we, just for a second, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner McCaskill, do we have any questions, any additional questions or statement as relates to this, to the budget item number two?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, so we will, again, thank you, Ms. Becker, thank you to staff, um, in all your respective places for the work that you've done on this as relates to this budget workshop. We're in trying times, but I think we will weather the storm, no, no pun intended. Um, and we won't use the H-word at all during the course of this budget workshop. Um, but I also think that we'll, uh, we'll move forward and we'll be fine and, and I, I challenge everyone within the sound of my voice to think of different opportunities for revenues as we move forward into the budget season. And so, um, that's really where we are now, is looking at ways in which we can increase revenue without creating detriment to citizens. And so, um, that's really the biggest piece that we have in place right now. Uh, we'll leave with closing remarks. Commissioner Campbell, I'll come right back to you. I want to go ahead and go to Mr. Holmes right quick and get through staff's roll call and then I'll let the commission close out, if that's okay.
Oh, I didn't say nothing, I'm sorry.
See you, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Holmes?
Nothing further, sir.
We have anything further from staff? I won't go through the traditional roll call, I ask one, I'll ask if anyone wants to chime in. With any additional comments?
I would like to, uh, notify our police department. It's an article in the Quality Magazine that, uh, references us in race relationship. It's about the, uh, meeting they had at my house with our chief and his police officers and people from the community. If you get a chance, uh, you can look at it. I think it, it also brings people to know that we worked very hard to get along with everybody here in the city.
Again, for leading the way. We'll call it, we won't call it coffee with a cop, Chief Shaw, we'll call it dinner with a cop, so that Palacca has its own twist on the program. Do we have anything else, um, from staff at this time? I don't hear anybody rushing to say anything, so I'm going to go to the commission at this time. Commissioner McCaskill, you have anything?
I don't have, um, much, but Mr. Mayor, I just want to say congratulations. I did see you sworn in today and, um, just want to thank you for all that you do and, and congratulations again.
Yes, um, I also, uh, echo that same sentiment. I'd like to congratulate and thank the mayor for all of his hard work and dedication and commitment and it shows that by getting those, uh, accolades, recognitions, uh, of the hard work and commitment that you, uh, give in this community. Also, I'd like to thank Commissioner McCaskill for her dedication and commitment to this, uh, community as well. She was re-elected unopposed and, uh, that says, uh, a lot as it relates to, uh, her commitment and dedication to the community as well, so I just wanted at least put that out there. I didn't get a chance to say it the last time, I missed it, I was, I missed the meeting due to, uh, family, death in the family, so I'm here at this meeting, um, making that comment, so I just want to thank you for your service.
Notice this to you as well, again, Commissioner Borm, our prayers are with you.
Certainly, I appreciate it, thank you much.
Thank you very much for that, Commissioner Borm.
Uh, yes, I would like to say, um, still extended prayers to Commissioner Borm as well. But also, uh, congratulations to Mayor Hill. And thank you for the opportunity to swear you in on today as, um, President of the Florida League of Mayors, I counted an honor to have been able to stand with you during such a joyous occasion, um, to the staff, um, Attorney Holmes and all the staff. We just thank you all for your continued dedication to the city, the hard work that you all are putting in. We know we're working in some difficult times, but in the difficult times, everyone have stepped up in some way, shape, form or fashion to make sure that this city is still, um, afloat and moving forward. So, um, Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Hill, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you. First and foremost, I, I want to thank, uh, this, this great staff that we have here at the city of Palacca, the citizens. I, I also want to make sure that I'm, I'm not remiss in, in recognizing the commission that we have. We've got, in my estimation, the best commission in the state of Florida. Where we started from just a few years ago, being called the only dying city in the state of Florida, which was truly a farce, to where we are now, reshining this, the gem of the St. John's River. I am just totally privileged to be able to work with this group of five as well as our great staff that commits tireless hours to making sure that the city of Palacca is better together. And so I want to, for those of you who don't know, every commissioner that sits on this commission has an active role in the Florida League of Cities, whether that's sitting on a policy committee or sitting on some, a nominating committee or getting a special recommendation from the president to sitting on the board of directors, to having officer positions in various auxiliary organizations within the league. We don't sit idle, we don't travel for fun, we go to work. We go to work so that the city of Palacca will be recognized from Washington DC to Miami to Orlando, to the Panhandle and so I, I'm really excited about where this commission is going and, um, I'm truly blessed to get an opportunity to lead the Florida League of Mayors. Again, I want to thank, uh, both Vice Mayor Brown and Commissioner Campbell, um, for, for stepping in for me uh, and definitely to Commissioner Campbell for swearing me in today. The support that, um, I get from this commission is second to none. I know sometimes people will see us on video and it looks like we don't get along, but we get along, we're family. And sometimes family will have disagreements, but at the end of the day, we all wear the same jersey and that's the Jersey of Palacca. Aside from that, you're going to hear the common theme over and over again, which is common ground in Palacca. And I want to tell you guys that last Saturday was probably to me the most disappointing depiction that I could ever get from this community as it relates to anyone who took a photograph of a divided community. And sometimes in controversy, we find opportunity. And there's an opportunity in the city of Palacca for us to find common ground. There's an opportunity for us in the city of Palacca to be the shining example of what happens when people disagree, but they learn to have empathy and understanding for one another in an effort to build their communities back up. And so I say that encouraged because the Florida League of Cities did not find it robbery to give the city of Palacca the highest award that it gives to a city and that's the citizenship award for the work that we've done with Race Issue Study Circles. And so here we are, the shining example for the state of Florida of what happens when people start to have candid conversations about race in their community, when they start to have conversations about how heritage and history can be binding factors and people listening and understanding. And so I'm excited because we're recognized and when you're recognized, there's a microscope on you. And so if the country had to look at us right now, I'd be a bit ashamed, but the reality is there's hope that we're going to all stand together, that we're going to find common ground and that the leaders of this community, not only the commission, but the pastors, the business leaders, the everyday citizens are going to find ways in which we can find common ground. Because at the end of the day, just like on Friday nights when we played for Jim McCool, we all wear the Palacca jersey and anytime that anybody comes to Palacca, we want to make sure that they understand that Palacca is destined for greatness. And so that's what we're looking for as we move forward. Also grateful to get the Hometown Hero Award coming up. Tomorrow's going to be a full day for us as commissioners with the Florida League of Cities having its nominating committee meeting as well as having some presentations moving forward during COVID. And so our work isn't finished just because we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're zooming every day. We're preparing for hurricane season, but more than anything else, we're preparing for common ground. I'm excited to work with the leaders, I'm excited of the leadership of Don Holmes. But most of all, I'm blessed to be a Palacan. I'm blessed to let people know that I am from Palacca, that it is the gem of the St. John's River and that it's not the dying city, it's the what's happening city in the words of Commissioner Campbell. And so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting if I've got a motion and we'll move forward. Very much.